Good evening and welcome to the Livonia Public School Board of Education meeting for February 9, 2015. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton is absent.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bonnefield, we're going to keep you busy today. Would you also lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Mrs. Bonnefield. And before we get into our agenda, those of you who are in the audience who would like to follow along with our agenda, agendas are in the back hall at the back counter. And those of you who are viewing us at home, you can get an agenda if you'd like to follow around. Visit our website at www.livoniapublicschools.org, highlight over "School Board" and the agendas will appear. Mrs. Burton is going to be joining us a little bit later at the meeting, and at that time I will turn the meeting over to her. We have quite a lengthy agenda today. We're going to be doing two rec-- or some really fantastic recognitions, two updates, and we have 21 items to vote on, so we have a lengthy agenda. We will be taking a short recess after Item 3B to congratulate the people that we are going to be recognizing this evening. And before we begin with our agenda, I would just like to take a minute to introduce some of our central office staff that are joining us today. Of course, we have Dr. Randy Leepa, who is our superintendent. He's at the end of the table. Next to him is our administrative assistant Jill Wasniak. Across from Jill is Steve Archibald, the Director of Secondary Programs, Andrea Oquiss, the Director of Elementary Programs, Cindy Demann, Director of Personnel, Sheila Ellis going down the table, Director of Academic Services, Lisa Abbey, Director of Business Services. In the back, we have Stacy Jenkins, who is the Administrator of Communications. Behind her is Jen Tatario, the Administrator of Student Services. And Jen, congratulations on your new position. We're very proud of you. Thanks for joining us. And did I-- oh, Dan Winery, the Director of Human Resources. And then behind him is Tim Clant, the Administrator for IT. Thank you so much for all your hard work and always supporting us and assisting us at our meetings. We really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, now let's go on with the agenda. We did Item 1, the roll call. Item 2, Pledge of Allegiance. We're on to Item 3, which is Communications. Item 3A, the Art Gallery Program, which we're so proud to present. And tonight, we have Emerson and Frost Middle School students. And Mrs. Jenkins, will you please tell us about that?
Sure. Thank you, Vice President Laura. Members of the board, Dr. Leepa. To start off tonight's presentations, I'd like to draw your attention to the wonderful works of art that are on the display on the board behind you and also on the front of the board table. There's one piece. This month, we're featuring the artwork of 7th and 8th grade students from Emerson and Frost Middle Schools. As part of the Student Art Gallery, these works were selected by art teacher Andy McMillan to represent the art programs at Emerson and Frost. It is quite an honor for these students to be selected to have their work on display for the next month here at the board office. Four students from each school were selected, so that's pretty special. We thank Mr. McMillan for sending these talents our way so we can share their art with the Board of Education and with the community. Each student will receive a special certificate, which reads "Livonia Public School Certificate of Recognition, Student Art Gallery Featured Artist, Selected to Represent the Emerson Middle School Art Department or the Frost Middle School Art Department at the Board of Education Office on February 9, 2015." And this is signed by Superintendent Dr. Leepa and myself. So I will go-- we'll start tonight with our students from Emerson. And as I call your names, students, come on up and join me, and we can have you point out which piece of artwork is yours, okay? So first, we have Ashley Couch. Ashley is an 8th grader at Emerson. Hi, Ashley. There's your certificate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And which piece is yours?
The Tinker Bell one.
Okay. And what type of artwork is that?
That's a stipplework. Basically, it's a fine-tipped marker and a bunch of little dots.
Isn't it neat? I can't tell that it's a bunch of dots from here at all. It's so neat. I'll have you stay up here with-- we'll have everyone gather around me. That's fine. Next, we have Lauren Hirschfield, an 8th grader at Emerson. Hi, Lauren.
Hi.
Here you are. And which piece is yours?
Mine are the two birds. It's also a--
Okay. So we've got two in the-- two in a row. I did not mean to do that. Next, we have Joanne Evans. I'm sorry, Joan Evans. Is Joan with us this evening? Okay, we'll be sure to get Joan her certificate. How about Riley St. Ledger, 7th grader at Emerson? Hi, Riley. Here's your certificate. And which piece is yours?
The base.
Oh, okay. Tell it-- can you tell us what's on the base?
Some lizards. Is it--
It's really cool. I had a close look at these pieces earlier this week. We'll move on now to the four students from Frost. We have Cameron Hatfield, a 7th grader. Hi, Cameron. Here's your certificate. And which piece is yours?
Mine is the painting at the bottom left.
Okay. It looks like a collage of some sort. Very neat. Okay, and next, we have Grace Manning, an 8th grader at Frost. Hi, Grace.
Hi.
There you go.
Thank you.
And which one is yours?
Mine's the other painting on the right.
Okay, on the lower?
Yeah.
Okay. Very, very cool. And let's see. Alyssa Anderson, 7th grader from Frost. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And which one is yours?
The rightmost one, like the very colorful one.
Okay. Uh-huh. What did you use to make that?
Colored pencils and inking pen.
Okay.
And a lot of time.
A lot of time. A lot of time. That's really nice. And last but not least, we have Anna Gabriel, who is also a 7th grader at Frost. Hi.
Hello.
There you go, Anna. And let us guess, either the cat or the other colorful--
The other picture.
Okay. Very nice. Why don't you join me in congratulating these student artists and thanking them for sharing their work with us.
Any comments from board members?
Fabulous.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. You're very talented. Congratulations, and thank you for sharing with the school district and the community. We appreciate your work.
I just have one question, Vice President.
Sure, Mr. Johnson.
Where are all the boys?
Yeah.
No! Not this time!
Thank you. We'll go on with Item 3B, Principal's Week Resolution. And again, before we begin, can we have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Yes. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District adopt the attached resolution establishing the week of February 9 through 15, 2015, as Principal's Week in Livonia Public Schools.
Support.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, Vice President Laura. Tonight, we're joining school districts from across the state of Michigan to recognize the professional, passionate, and dedicated leadership of our school principals. Here in Livonia Public Schools, you will seldom find a school principal in any of our 27 schools and centers sitting in their office. Not a chance. They are out and about, engaged in student learning, and right in the center of the constant buzz of activity in their building. Our principals are some of the most enthusiastic champions for education in our district, and we're happy to honor them during the week of February 9 through the 15, which has officially been declared by Governor Rick Snyder as Michigan's School Principals Week. So if you're in any of our schools any day during this week, be sure to give your principal a high five or an appreciative handshake for the work that they do every day with our staff and students here in Livonia Public Schools. To help us honor them, I'd like to invite trustee Mark Johnson to the podium to read and present a resolution that we have prepared. We're going to present this tonight to Terry Taylor, who is a principal at Cooper Upper Elementary, and he, along with Mrs. Ann Owen from Emerson Middle School, are co-presidents of the Livonia Educational Administrators Group, appropriately known as LEEDs. Very good. You're welcome.
Hi, Terry. My pleasure. And let me just read some of the rationale that we have in providing you with this this evening. Research has shown that one of the most tangible and indispensable characteristics of effective schools is their strong administrative leadership. The Governor of the State of Michigan proclaimed the week of February 9 through the 15, 2015, as Michigan Principals Week. The Livonia Public School School Board of Education believes this dedicated group of educators deserves this special recognition by proclaiming the week of February 9 through the 15, 2015, as Principals Week in the Livonia Public School School District. And now let me read the resolution. Principal's Week Resolution. Whereas Principals Week is dedicated to recognizing the significant contribution of Michigan's school principals and the commitment to providing quality educational experiences and guidance for the students, and whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential as schools, teachers, and support staff are to implement college and career-ready standards and assessments, and whereas school principals play a vital role in the success of the students and act as the liaison between the school and the community it serves, and whereas we join with educators, parents, and students throughout the state to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the trustees of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education join the Governor of the State of Michigan in recognizing the week of February 9 through the 15, 2015, as Michigan School Principals Week, and encourage all citizens to thank and support the efforts of school principals in our community. Terry, thank you. Thank you to all the principals. You are just an indispensable resource that we have, and we, as the Board of Education, truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Laura and the board, and Dr. Leepa, on behalf of all the principals in Livonia, we appreciate being recognized for our efforts and know that we appreciate your support, too. We can't do any of this without you, and it's so great to be a part of this community and to serve this community in the ways that we do. So thank you very much.
I do believe, Dr. Leepa, I wanted to add a few words as well.
Yeah, thank you very much, Stacy, and just would like to add to Mr. Johnson's comments that we're very fortunate here to have a remarkable group of people leading our schools every day. They're difficult jobs. They're labors of love, and they're people that are in those positions because they've made a commitment for their entire career to be involved in education. We're lucky to have them. As I mentioned a few weeks ago, I think one of our successes as a school administration has been the hiring of the people that we have for these jobs. We look for more than just people with technical skills and bright people. We look for people who truly care and truly are committed to the kids in our school district. So they live it every day, and we're beyond lucky to have them monitoring what happens in school every single day in our school district. So Terry, thanks to you and all of your colleagues, a remarkable group of people. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Leepa.
Any comments? I can personally attest to all the hard work and commitment that our principals give to our districts. So thank you, Terry, to you and all the principals for your hard work, your commitment, and for helping our community, our schools, and especially our students. Thank you. Okay, with that, if there aren't any objections, can we take a short recess? Oh, we need to take a vote. That's right. Boy, just moving right along. Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And will you take the vote, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Or she carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Now, with that, are there any objections? We will take a short recess. Thank you. We're back from our break. Thank you. And we're going to move on with our agenda. Item 3C, Written Communication. Does any board member have any written--
a design process for the infrastructure pieces that had to be put in place. A year goes on, products change, enhancements come, so the process starts over and over. So, we thought it would be helpful if we showed you some pictures of some of the work that was done last year. So, this was Coolidge, when the project started in 2013. And after a summer's worth of renovations, you can see that the class is much more lively. And even though most of the infrastructure work put in last year was related to the construction, it laid a foundation for what's going to be happening from a technology standpoint. So, as we look at a room, you can see the flooring had been updated. In the last picture, you saw there was carpeting put in to make it more inviting for groups to work around the classrooms and work in small collaborative groups. Windows and window treatments were added to help the lighting in the room and help prepare for the projectors that are going in. Ceilings were replaced. Even the air conditioning systems play a part of it, because the rooms are much more quieter now, and we had to take that into consideration when the new technology systems were going in. So, as we look at this typical classroom, a couple of things to highlight are, this summer, the data projectors will be going in. Many different systems were piloted, and what will be going out for a bid are interactive projectors. As Matt mentioned, the sound field systems have already been installed in the first phase of classrooms. This not only helps whatever's being projected for the students to hear that audio, but it helps so that the teacher can speak in a normal tonal voice throughout the day, and it makes it a much more calm environment. Document cameras are being piloted right now, and as you can see in the background, the teacher's using one to show off some of the student work. The access points are going in. And as you walk around the buildings, if you happen to notice one with a blue light on, just so you know, that means it's connected and somebody's using it right now. If you see a green light, it means that nobody's currently using it. So, hopefully, most of the time that you walk around, you'll be seeing the blue lights. There's also some backend pieces that you might not see in your tour. The cabling that was redone, the network infrastructure that was put in place, all of that is to lay the foundation for the high-speed electronics, the new computers, the mobile devices that are being piloted. There was also an awful lot of cleanup work that went on. You can see the picture on the left is one of the wiring closets back in 2013 with some of the old data cabling over sinks. It didn't have adequate electrical. On the right, you'll see one of the newer closets that meets all the current requirements, all the current codes, and lays a foundation for not only the technology systems going in now, but hopefully for the next five to 10 years as well. Matt?
Thank you. So, that's progress to date. As you can see, a considerable amount of work has been completed. Now, we can talk about current and future activities, so near term and far term, what's coming next. So, proposals for Phase Two projects. A recommendation has been prepared for you for the purchase of computer workstations. These will be teacher-in-lab computer workstations. I understand the first read on that was last week, and hoping for action on that tonight. And then, in the near term, we have additional requests for proposals going out for the following items. Classroom projectors, document cameras, additional rounds of cabling, because like I said, the activities completed to date were cabling district-wide for the wireless network, full cabling in the first five buildings, but obviously, we need to do full cabling in the remainder of the buildings. So, that's what that piece is. Video surveillance, I had alluded to it earlier. The video surveillance system will be replaced and upgraded, so that's getting ready to go out as well. And then, server and data storage infrastructure. These will be a couple of different bid packs that go out with different pieces of these as the timing makes sense, but these will be going out in the near term. Obviously, next steps after we go through that RFP process would be to evaluate the solutions and come up with recommendations for the board, for preferred vendors, preferred solutions, that sort of thing. Board committee review of that second phase of technology. Timing-wise, we're talking about classroom projectors, cabling, and video surveillance in March. And then, following that would be servers and data storage and document cameras. That's still TBD as we finish up the RFP. And then, board action on that initial phase, again, classroom projectors, cabling, and video surveillance, again in March is when we hope to come to you for an award, and TBD again on servers, data storage, and document cameras. And then, after that's the implementation piece, we start getting into it all over again.
...this evening, we will only be able to project it on the screen. However, tomorrow morning after our board presentation, we will have the PowerPoint uploaded and posted on our district's website. So gentlemen, I am now going to turn the presentation over to the two of you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give you this presentation tonight. My name's Matt Lindner. I'm with Plant Moran. As Sheila said, we're going to take you through an update of the technology bond. The agenda's up on the screen over there. I think best place to start, because it has been awhile since we've spoken with you, would be an overview of the overall scope of the technology bond, just sort of a refresher of those items. Then we'll talk a little bit about progress to date. There's quite a bit of work that has been completed since we've gotten started, so we'll take you through some of that. And then talk about what's coming next, and really where we see, what we see the future activities, near term and far term, as being. So again, just a refresher of the scope. This is what we do have in the scope for the technology bond. Classroom technology tools, so this would be the projectors, document cameras, those sorts of things. Mobile learning devices, computers district-wide, wireless network, data network upgrades, a new phone system, printers and copiers, servers and other data storage infrastructure, surveillance systems, all of the low voltage technology cabling to support these technologies. And then finally, technologies in community rooms. So this is something you've seen before, but I thought it might make sense to frame up the conversation a little bit. So that was our overview. Let's talk a little bit about progress to date. What have we completed so far? Obviously, we've selected our technology designer. That will be Barton Mallow. Paul Twig is here with me tonight, and he'll speak to you about some of the things that we've done. We've completed quite a bit of planning activities in terms of what projects are we going to tackle, that scope that we just talked about. And we've gone through and finalized the requirements for those Phase 1 and 2 buildings. What are we going to go ahead and get into the first couple of phases of buildings? How are we going to do that? How are we going to go ahead and coordinate with construction and time our implementations around their activities? We finalized the program for all major projects for the entire five years, so that's all been planned out. Excuse me. And then we've gotten into our first-year bidding cycle. These would be the things that were implemented over the last summer. Things that were included in that first-year bidding cycle, low voltage data cabling, again, wireless networks district-wide, phone system, PA systems, network electronics, and classroom sound amplification systems. So that was our first-year bid cycle. Some of those technologies are district-wide. Some of those technologies are for the Phase 1 buildings only, and I'll take you through that. So, district-wide, what did we complete over the last summer? Substantially completed in summer and fall of '14, cabling infrastructure for the wireless network. Wireless network went in district-wide. Low voltage cabling needed to be installed to support that. Then that wireless network itself comes in right behind it, and we start installing access points. I saw one up behind me somewhere in here. Directly over me, the wireless access points were hung and attached to that data cabling, so we now have the wireless network up and running. Specific network electronic upgrades in the data closets to support that wireless network were needed as well, so those have been completed. And then administrative computers, so new computer workstations for school secretaries, counselors, custodians, and administrators, maintenance, transportation, and warehouse departments, and central office administrators, secretaries, and the computer lab. So that's district-wide what we've done over the past year. We also had additional work that occurred in the Phase 1 buildings. This would be Cleveland, Coolidge, Rosedale, Frost, and Cooper. Additional items completed in those buildings included the new PA system, the phone system upgrade, full network upgrades. So on the previous slide, I talked about network electronics to support the wireless network. In these five buildings, all of the network electronics have been upgraded, so that piece of the project is done for those buildings. Classroom sound amplification was installed. We had a reinstallation of the existing video surveillance cameras. Those systems will be replaced in a later phase, but we pulled them back out so they wouldn't be damaged during construction, pulled in new cabling where needed, reinstalled those cameras. And then we did some preparation work for 2015 classroom technology implementations, namely, we're talking about the piloting of classroom projectors and document cameras. So that's all we did for the last year. Haven't had much going on. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Paul and let him take you through the next little bit.
Thank you. Because this is a multi-year project, the design process has been ongoing and iterative. So we met a year and a half ago, started to talk about things that might not happen until 2016, '17. Committees met, went on building tours, looked at product evaluations, and went through a design process for the infrastructure pieces that had to be put in place. A year goes on, products change, enhancements come, so the process starts over and over. So we thought it would be helpful if we showed you some pictures of some of the work that was done last year. So this was Coolidge, when the project started in 2013. And after a summer's worth of renovations, you can see that the class is much more lively. And it's, even though most of the infrastructure work put in last year was related to the construction, it laid a foundation for what's going to be happening from a technology standpoint. So as we look at a room, you can see the flooring had been updated. In the last picture, you saw there was carpeting put in to make it more inviting for groups to work around the classrooms and work in small collaborative groups. Windows and window treatments were added to help the lighting in the room and help prepare for the projectors that are going to be going in. Ceilings were replaced. Even the air conditioning systems play a part of it, because the rooms are much more quieter now, and we had to take that into consideration when the new technology systems were going in. So as we look at this typical classroom, a couple of things to highlight are, this summer, the data projectors will be going in. Many different systems were piloted, and what will be going out for a bid are interactive projectors. As Matt mentioned, the sound field systems have already been installed in the first phase of classrooms. This not only helps whatever's being projected for the students to hear that audio, but it helps so that the teacher can speak in a normal tonal voice throughout the day, and it's a much, makes it a much more calm environment. Document cameras are being piloted right now. And as you can see in the background, the teacher's using one to show off some of the student work. The access points are going in. And as you walk around the buildings, if you happen to notice one with a blue light on, just so you know, that means it's connected and somebody's using it right now. If you see a green light, it means that nobody's currently using it. So hopefully, most of the time that you walk around, you'll be seeing the blue lights. There's also some backend pieces that you might not see in your tour. The cabling that was redone, the network infrastructure that was put in place. All of that is to lay the foundation for the high-speed electronics, the new computers, the mobile devices that are being piloted. There was also an awful lot of cleanup work that went on. You can see the picture on the left is one of the wiring closets back in 2013 with some of the old data cabling over sinks. It didn't have adequate electrical. On the right, you'll see one of the newer closets that meets all the current requirements, all the current codes, and lays a foundation for not only the technology systems going in now, but hopefully for the next five to 10 years as well.
Matt?
Okay. Thank you. So that's progress to date. As you can see, a considerable amount of work has been completed. Now we can talk about current and future activities, so near term and far term, what's coming next. So, proposals for Phase 2 projects. A recommendation is, has been prepared for you for the purchase of computer workstations. These will be teacher and lab computer workstations. I understand the first read on that was last week, and hoping for action on that tonight. And then, in the near term, we have additional requests for proposals going out for the following items. Classroom projectors, document cameras, additional rounds of cabling, because like I said, the activities completed to date were cabling district-wide for the wireless network, full cabling in the first five buildings, but obviously, we need to do full cabling in the remainder of the buildings. So that's what that piece is. Video surveillance, I had alluded to it earlier. The video surveillance system will be replaced and upgraded, so that's getting ready to go out as well. And then server and data storage infrastructure. These will be a couple of different bid packs that go out with different pieces of these as the timing makes sense, but these will be going out in the near term. Obviously, next steps after we go through that RFP process would be to evaluate the solutions and come up with recommendations for the board for preferred vendors, preferred solutions, that sort of thing. Board committee review of that second phase of technology. Timing-wise, we're talking about classroom projectors, cabling, and video surveillance in March. And then, following that would be servers and data storage and document cameras. That's still TBD as we finish up the RFP. And then board action on that initial phase, again, classroom projectors, cabling, and video surveillance, again, in March is when we hope to come to you for an award. And TBD again on servers, data storage, and document cameras. And then after that's the implementation piece, we start getting into it all over again. So what are we talking about in a little more detail for the Phase 2 technology projects? This is what we're talking about for summer and fall of '15 implementation at Kennedy, Roosevelt, Hays, Riley, Emerson, and Franklin. Majority of these items are phased with construction. We need to coordinate our activities around the construction schedule. So we're talking about, again, new PA system, cabling infrastructure throughout the buildings, that phone system upgrade that the Phase 1 buildings got last year, sound amplification, technologies in the community spaces for presentation and that sort of thing. And then classroom technologies, again, document cameras, data projectors, the interactive projectors that Paul talked about. And it should also be noted, for those classroom technologies, we'll be going back and hitting the first five buildings at the same time, so that'll be a substantial project. Computer workstations is large enough and complex enough that it warranted its own slide. So procurement for new computer workstations for teachers and computer labs this winter. That, as I'd said, that, we're hoping for an award on that tonight. The implementation has, is somewhat complex, but here's how it breaks out. Phase 1 and 2 buildings, teacher workstations will go Phase 1, second shift in the fall of 2015. Phase 2, again, second shift work in the spring of 2015. Lab workstations in Phase 1 and Phase 2 buildings will go summer of 2016. The remaining buildings, again, the teacher workstations would be fall of 2015. Again, we're talking about second shift work, but that will follow the Phase 1 building. So we'll do Phase 1 first on second shift, and then follow on throughout the remainder of the district. Labs for the remaining buildings, they will actually go this summer in 2015. So kind of a complex implementation schedule, quite a bit of conversation and planning occurred to come up with that, but that's what it looks like. What it all boils down to is we're talking about new computers district-wide by the end of the summer of '16.
If I could just add, you may recall in our conversations that we wanted to touch every one of our schools in the first two years. And so one of the significant ways we were going to do that was through technology. And so that's why you see the non-Phase 1 and Phase 2 schools having their labs this summer. That's one of the, two or three different ways that we've made sure that every single school was touched in some way through the bond issue in the first few years.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, future activities, this is longer-term activities. Data center upgrades still to be determined in terms of scope, timing, that sort of thing. Mobile learning devices planned for 2016, '17 school year. Printers and copiers to be replaced district-wide in 2017. And then indoor digital displays, so this would be digital signage, starting in 2016, but really following the construction schedule from there. So that's all we have coming up. Carry on with my little joke. That's all I've got. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any. And actually, before I do answer questions, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize and give some gratitude to Tim Clan and his staff and the efforts that they've put in to pull all of this stuff off over the last couple of years. It's been a considerable effort.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members?
Well, thank you so much. It's always so exciting to see technology updates, and I know that the staff and all the, everyone involved was so excited, especially with the wireless internet, so.
Fantastic.
That was great. It's exciting. Thank you for the update.
Great. Thank you.
We're moving on to item 6C, the quarterly bond report.
Lot of activity here tonight.
Yes, it is.
Good evening.
Thank you.
I am just very quickly going to turn this over to Paul Terio from Plant Moran-Cressa. As you know, each quarter, we bring you an update with what's happening with the 2013 bond. There is a lot of bond discussion going on this evening. So Paul is just going to update you with current budgets, what we spent to date, and what's coming shortly. You saw a lot of what's coming on with the technology. Paul will be talking about what's coming on with construction in the short term and what's going on this summer. And as you know, a little bit later on, we'll be looking at five different bids relative to the construction, four on construction and then one on technology that Matt and Paul just talked about. So with that, I'll introduce Paul Terios.
Good evening, Mr. Terio.
Good evening. Matt and Paul, feel free to heckle me if you'd like for my phone going off a minute ago. Sorry about that. So, great to be back again. Really just wanted to give an update on the overall bond program. We've got Dashboard, you should have one in front of you. This is the same format we've used in the past, and basically every quarter, we're coming back and kind of giving an update as to where we're at with the dollars and some of the critical issues. This is kind of broken into six sections. The upper-left is kind of static. It's the goals and objectives of the bond. You'll kind of see kind of some of the rationale as far as why the bond, and the benefits, and some of the costs. So I won't get into that. You guys are familiar with all of that, obviously. Down in the bottom-left is critical project issues, so these are some of the things we're working through right now. One of the big ones is all the final payments for 2014. Most of those have been made. There's still a few contracts that are actually going in this week for final payment, so we're making sure we have waivers of lien, closeout documents, making sure there are no issues before we make that final payment, which I think you're aware there is one. Actually, and there's one on the technology side, too, that we're working through with district's legal counsel and the bonding companies that we've engaged. Mock-up furniture progressions, so those are going pretty well. We've had all, I think 11 classrooms where the furniture have been now to two different stations throughout the district. I think there's two more moves that those are going to go through before we sit everybody down and get some feedback. We've definitely had some challenges in some things that work and don't work, but I don't, I think it's a little too early to draw any conclusions from that yet, so. Finalizing the bidding schedules for 2015, so I think we've got pretty, everything pretty well under control. The one big one is Franklin, which I was happy to see drawings just got delivered this morning to Conference Room B upstairs with the Franklin final drawing set. So that's not the final-final set, but it's kind of like the final check or review set for the CMs and myself and the maintenance team to go through, so. So that looks like it's on track. Then obviously, next we've got completing the designs and issuing bid documents. And then those all go up to Lansing, to the Office of Fire Safety and the, or the Bureau of Fire Safety and the Bureau of Construction Codes to review. We've got some feedback from them already. It's been pretty positive, some little minor things that need to be fixed, but no major deal breakers at all, so that's been good. And then contract award recommendations, so if the board awards contracts tonight, we'll be starting tomorrow to write contracts. I think, actually, I think Stephanie said she's already got some of them in the works being drafted, so that we can get those on the street as soon as the board sees fit to award those. And then, obviously, starting to expedite materials, so getting in shop drawings and submittals, and making sure that we are first this summer with getting windows delivered, ventilators delivered, all the other mechanical equipment, flooring, et cetera. So one of the reasons we bid the projects out before Christmas, in the case of Emerson and Riley, was because we wanted to get out early and get the best bid pricing and get the materials delivered well before summer's here, so I think we're on track to do that, so. The Center section, is there any questions at all before I keep rolling along?
Any questions?
The Center section really deals more with the finances, so at the top, you'll see budget summary through February 2nd. So this just gives you a snapshot of our original budget, kind of broken down by those categories on the left there. You'll see some money that had moved around, but you'll see the current budget is $195 million, which is good. If it's ever not $195 million, I'm sure Lisa will let me know. That would be a mistake, but. Current commitments, we've let, not including the things that are before the board tonight, we've awarded $38.5 million worth of contracts, and we've actually paid out about just under $29 million. And we've got about $9.5 million left to complete on that. So you can see, percentage-wise, you know, we're a pretty good piece of the pie along the way here, so.
One of the positives I would mention, as we know, we came under budget on our first set of projects, and we were able to reallocate some of the dollars through the approved budget changes down to the owner contingency line item, which of course is our protection line item into the last three years of the bond issue, to make sure we have enough dollars to do all of our projects. So that's good news, to see that go from $6.1 million to $9 million just in the first year and a half.
Yeah, our goal the first two years of the bond is to grow that number as big as we can get it, to offset any risks that might be down the road that we don't foresee, so. The Center section on the bottom really deals with just cash flow and some of the budget tracking that we're doing. You'll see the original Series 1 construction fund deposit of $108 million roughly, plus the net earned interest to date. Gives us just over $108 million of that, and this is through December 31st, so these numbers are slightly different than the report above. But through December 31st, we had paid out $26.6 million, which left us $81 million left. And we're basically running everything, all these reports through the district's system, and then as well through our system, e-Builder, and making sure that they match up. And in this case, again, they did match up to the penny, so we're happy for that. Any questions at all about that middle section? On the right, you've got the three-month look-ahead schedule. So obviously, we've got the Dashboard Report that we're giving tonight, as well as the Emerson and Riley awards, and the IT Security and Environmental and Commissioning Awards, which we presented last Wednesday. Then we've got Emerson and Riley, we've got the same batch of awards that we presented last Wednesday that will be voted on tonight. And then we've got Kennedy, Hays, Kennedy, Roosevelt, which will be coming to you on March 2nd, unless you want to open up a new building called Kennedy. And then we've got the moving award recommendations, too. That RFP for the moving went out on Friday. This year, we're bidding out just the moving piece of all the furniture. We're going to bid out the technology move separately, to try to keep that more geared towards technology vendors, and we're hoping that'll go a little more smoothly this year. And then behind that, we've got the Franklin Award Recommendations, and then bringing in, later in, probably in April and May, we'll be bringing in some other odds and ends. We probably need to hire a material testing consultant, a roofing consultant, and a couple other folks for this year, because we're doing big additions where we're going to have slightly different needs than last year. And then down below is really just the phasing schedule, which you've seen before. 2014 and 2015 buildings you're familiar with. 2016 and 2017, we have not chosen those buildings yet. Within the next couple of months, the architects will start asking us, when can we start design for 2016, and we'll need to give them answers. So we're working on that, trying to come up with what the plan of attack is for the balance of the bond, so. Are there any questions at all?
Any questions or comments?
One comment?
Yes, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know that I very much appreciate the early-bird approach in getting the request for bids out before Christmas. We like to be the new kids and the first kids on the block doing anything.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much. These quarterly reports are so helpful to us. It's so exciting to see the progress that we've been making every so many months, and to think back where we were last year and what we have now is truly amazing, so.
Yeah, it went by quick, and pretty soon, it's going to be 2018, and you're going to have the last one, I think, so. Don't blink, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your update. With that, we're going to move on to item 6D, the acceptance of the bond audit for 2013, '14. Mrs. Abby?
Thank you very much. And I just do want to mention that tomorrow, we'll get that quarterly report out on the website as well, that Dashboard Update. Thank you very much. I'm going to, in just a second, introduce our auditor from Yo and Yo, Brian Dixon. But first, I just want to remind us why we're bringing a bond audit this time of the year. As you know, we're required to have the bond funds audited by an independent financial service when the work is substantially complete, or you can do it on an annual basis. We've chosen to do it on an annual basis. And as you know, of course, because you've seen them here at the podium a couple times already tonight, Plant Moran-Cressa is our owner's representative. Plant Moran, on the financial side, is also our financial auditors. They do prepare our financial statements and audit those financial statements each year. So we thought it would make sense for us to have an independent auditor actually review the bond transactions each year according to the requirements by the state that they must follow. So we went out for bid. We're pleased to say that we did accept Yo and Yo as the auditor for this year and for the, throughout the term of the bond. You'll recall, of course, that they were our auditors several years ago, and we were very pleased with the work that they did, so we were happy to make that recommendation. Yo and Yo did do their, and I'm sure Brian will talk about it a little bit more, but they did do their audit for actually 13 months. We sold the bonds in May, we actually, or we approved the bonds in May, the community did. We sold them in June of '13. So this audit actually goes from June of '13 through June of '14, so it pulls in 13 months. So the numbers that you have in those financial statements actually look different than what you just saw from Mr. Terio, because his are up to date, and ours are, of course, as of June 30th, 2014. So again, the audit was conducted for that period of time. Pleased to say again that we had an unmodified or unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion that we can have from an auditor. Short answer, that means the books look good, and we followed all of the rules and regulations that we were supposed to. And again, I'm sure Brian will talk about how they go through that process and what that looks like. There's a PowerPoint presentation that'll have. You also had the financial statements in your packet, and we talked about those last week at our finance committee meeting. So I would be happy to answer any questions if they've developed, or after Mr. Dixon is done with his presentation, I'm sure either one of us would be happy to answer any questions. So with that, I just, let me introduce Brian. He's a principal with Yo and Yo. He's been there since 1998. He has a wealth of experience in public schools and doing this kind of work as part of their job. It's one of the reasons we chose them, is we saw how many bond audits that is a part of their regular year-to-year process. And we're pleased to have him back here with us in Livonia today. So with that, I'll introduce Brian.
Thank you. And before we do that, if we can just take a moment and get a motion on the floor. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Yes, Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the audit report for the 2013 bond as presented by the audit firm of Yo and Yo.
Support.
Hey, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Good evening.
All right. Thank you very much for having me. Again, we did audit the audit, the financial statements for the bond audit only, and that was from June 25th of 2013 through June 30th of 2014. And we did issue an unmodified opinion. Again, it's a clean opinion, like Mrs. Abby said. And again, that was on the bond financial statements, and they were fairly presented. If we look at the balance sheet for the bond audit, as of June 30th, 2014, this is a snapshot in time. You will see assets, the restricted assets of $1.2 million, and that's cash and investments. Your liabilities and fund balance, you had accounts payable out there of $6.8 million at the end of the year. $148,000, $147,000 of due to other funds, and then your restricted fund balance at the end of the year, just under $95 million. If we break down the revenues that you've received over the life of the bond so far, majority of those obviously are the proceeds that you received, and the proceeds there listed are the big red area, 95%, and that's the Series 1. As we go further and issue Series 2 bonds, you'll see this, you know, the pie change a little bit, but it's going to be pretty consistent for a couple of years. Now if we look at your total expenditures, and I'm just going to highlight, these are the same categories that you will see on your quarterly reports. We use those same categories in our audit, and then we, just a couple of them that I wanted to highlight, 33% is being spent on hard construction, 20% on professional fees, 21% on information and technology upgrades, and then buses, equipment, and furniture is 14%. So the biggest four of your expenditures. Then if you look at just your expenditures for '13, because we did, again, we are auditing '13 and '14, a 13-month, so just as of June 30th of 2013, you will see the bond issuance cost, professional fees, and your buses and equipment, just a little bit in there. $1.1 million spent in that first six days. And then, in 2014, just under $13 million of expenditures. Again, majority of that, 36% hard construction, 23% is information and technology upgrades, 20% is your professional fees, and 15% buses and equipment. And then this slide I put in here, this is going to be your expense trend over the life of the bond. So right now, you will see that there's only two years included on here, and we'll just continue to add on to these each year. But as I mentioned, $1.1 million spent in 2013 as of June 30th, 2013, and then just under $13 million spent as of June 30th, 2014. And then the opposite side of that, fund balance that's included in the bond fund, we'll see as of June 30th of '13, you had $107 million sitting there. we'll see as of June 30th of '13, you had 107 million sitting there. And then it moved down, as you spent some of that in 2014, down to just under 95 million.
Brian, if I can just highlight one thing, back when we looked at the overall pie chart on the expenditures, this would be an unusual year as it relates to professional fees, because there's a lot of cost upfront as it relates to getting the bond going, and architects and so on. That work has to be done upfront. And of course, while there was some of the hard construction that was done prior to June 30th, much of that hard construction was done in July and August also. So those professional fees actually relate to a lot of the hard construction work that occurred the following two months. So in future reports, I would anticipate that that percentage will come down significantly for the overall professional fees.
That is correct. You will see that percentage shrinking. So that's the numbers of the financial statements. Any question on that before we get into the rest of the report? So then we also looked at internal controls, and that's an internal controls over the bond financial statement reporting. And we found no material weaknesses in those internal controls and no significant efficiencies. And then finally, as the state requires, we do look at compliance, and we found no non-compliance, which means you're spending your bond funds properly, based on the testing that we did. So finally, thank you again for having me here tonight, and thank you, Ms. Abby and her staff. And it was a very quick process and made it very easy. They pulled all the information, had it all ready for us. Any questions on what we did?
Any questions or comments? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Vice President Laura. Thank you for your presentation. And I know Dr. Leopha just touched on the June 2013 expenditures, but the bond issuance cost of $880,000, which would include, what, legal fees?
That was all the issuance of the original bonds. Yep, it would be, I don't have them off the top of my head, but, you know, the legal fees, the.
The brokerage fees.
Brokerage fees.
Yeah, it has to do with the professional fees. We remember, we had Paul Stotter, who prepared all of those debt documents. We had JP Morgan, who actually went out and sold the bonds, and then legal fees as well.
Okay.
That's, it's very, it's a, it's a very normal cost, and it's absolutely required. There's absolutely no way to go out and sell bonds without having a lot of people involved in the process.
Okay.
Welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers, to accept the bond audit for 2013-2014. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 6E, the appointment of auditor for 2014-15 audit. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District appoint the firm of Plant Moran to audit and prepare the financial report for Livonia Public Schools School District for the 2014-15 school year.
Support.
Motion is on the floor by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abby?
Thank you very much. Again, this was a topic we've talked about at a couple of, at a study session and at a committee session. Three years ago, we went out for bid for our financial audit, and the low bidder to meet our requirements at that time was Plant Moran. They have done an excellent job for us for the last three years, and we have had discussions with them and asked them, or the board asked us to ask them if they would hold their fee for the financial audit for another year. And they said that they would, they'd be happy to do that, and they like working with us. So we recommended to the Board of Education that we do extend their agreement for one more year for this current 2014-2015 fiscal year, and appoint Plant Moran as our financial auditor for this year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to appoint, the appointment of the auditor for 2014-15 audit. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Item 6F, approval of construction bid results for Emerson Middle School and Riley Upper Elementary School 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase 2 construction project budget in Emerson Middle School, $4,742,235; Riley Upper Elementary School, $6,803,113; and for a contingency budget of $1,084,024, for a total cost of $12,629,372. Further move that the Board authorize Superintendent Randy Leopha to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education for the contractors listed on Section A 3 and A 4 from the construction manager, Barton Mallow Company.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Ms. Abby?
Thank you very much. Again, as we mentioned a couple of times tonight, we are bringing forward five recommendations utilizing 2013 bond funds this evening. Mr. Terrio is going to come up and talk in detail. We, again, we, in our committee meeting last week, you were provided the binder, and you, we went through every single page in the binder and looked at all of the detail regarding the bids, the budgets, the bid tabulations, meaning all of the vendors that put their bids in, and the actual recommendations, which is put together by the construction manager, Barton Mallow, who's also here this evening, if we have any questions for them as well. And again, after they do all of their due diligence, vet all of the vendors and suppliers and contractors, then they make that recommendation. So Paul's going to talk about that in a little bit more detail. And then following that, we have the computer bid, that we will talk about the bid, and then three professional services and, that we currently have, that we'll actually be asking you to extend their contract for another year. And Paul will be talking about that. So with that, I will once again introduce Mr. Paul Terrio from Plant Moran Cressa.
Good evening, again.
Good evening. So I'm back. The bond's complete now. All the money's spent. Told you if you blinked, you'd miss it. Oh, no, just kidding. So I see everybody has their binders that we had went over last Wednesday. The first portion of that, Section A, is the Emerson and Riley construction bid, so I just wanted to kind of walk through that again. Those bids, if you flip to Section A 1, went out for bid on December 15th. It was a public bid. Drawings were made available, specifications were made available. On January 15th, we received 97 separate bid proposals from 60 firms, which is great coverage. If you remember, last year, we had a couple things we had to rebid out. This year, we're in much better shape on that, and we do not have that issue. Scott Lone and Stephanie Hatchey, who's here this evening, have spent countless hours interviewing all the firms that were apparently low, and some of the second and third-low firms as well, making sure they had the scope of work that was outlined in the documents, making sure that every last thing on the drawings that was in the scope was taken into account, and the right materials were specified and things like that. So they've done a lot of due diligence on that end. And tonight, we have contract awards, or I guess a total project award of $12,629,372 to present, so. The contractors that bid on the project will become prime contractors directly with Livonia Public Schools. And as I mentioned before, those contracts are being drafted. Once those are done, we'll bring them back to the administration to review, and the legal counsel to review and sign. And that'll then be issued, and then Barton Mallow's contract will be amended, as we already have a contract with them. It'll be amended, that'll actually be amendment number three for them. And that'll be brought back to administration as well. Section 2 just kind of gives you an update, just kind of an overall budget summary. You can see the original construction budget was $10.6 million. We came in right about 10.8, so only $200,000 off, which is a pretty, pretty good variance there. I was very happy with that, about 2%. You can see the CM fees, the budget was about 850,000. Those came in right around $700,000, so we had a positive variance there. And then the construction contingency, we're basically carrying 10% of the construction costs of the bid awards for Riley and Emerson, so a combined construction contingency for this project of $1084,000. And then in some total, if you add the variances up, you'll see we're about $100,000 over budget. This does include three alternates, some science-room flooring, abandoning some mechanical equipment rather than demolishing and removing it, and then using wireless clocks rather than wired clocks, which we did last year, which I can tell you was as hard as building the rest of the project. We also had some other alternates that we're not proposing to present tonight. We're really waiting to see how the bids come in on the other projects, the elementary schools, which seem to have come in well, but were not through the whole process yet. And then the Franklin bids are really the biggest piece that's still out there. So we thought it would be more prudent to wait and see how those numbers came in before we asked the Board to consider those alternates. They're mostly mechanical upgrades, and then some associated finishes, ceilings, lights, carpet, things like that, so. So that is the recommendation for Emerson and Riley. So it's a total of $12,629,372. Ellie?
Paul, thank you.
Yep.
Just so the, so I'm sure some of the community will remember, it was, I don't know how many years ago, that they did a lot of work over at Emerson.
Mm-hmm.
And the amount of monies that we're spending this year aren't as great as what we are spending at some of the other schools for the mechanical. So what, in addition to what was done then, is, you know, well, kind of expand on number one, why we're not spending as much money, and number two, what they are going to do.
Sure. Yeah, so Emerson had, as you mentioned, some pretty significant renovations. They got all-new windows, new vertical unit ventilators, lightings, ceilings. I believe the entrance canopy may have even been put on at that time. But at any rate, this time around, we're really going through and trying to conserve as much of that work that was done. Obviously, it's got a useful life that is remaining on it. We certainly don't want to throw out mechanical units that are newer, especially when a lot of your buildings have original mechanical equipment that we do want to replace. So as far as the mechanical system, you know, we're looking at replacing some rooftop units, some piping and valves, all the control systems. So we're going to get rid of the old pneumatic controls that are run by compressors in the boiler room. We're going to go to new digital control systems that are all web-based, so that'll be a huge energy savings. The lights that didn't get replaced, we're looking to finish that project. And then some of the finishes that weren't done, you know, a lot of the flooring, a lot of work over in the stage and cafeteria area, the band area, that didn't get done last time, is on the docket for this time around. So we've certainly tried to be cognizant of what was done before and make sure that we save as much of that as possible.
Thank you.
Yep. Section A 3 just kind of gives you all the detail. It lists all the prime contractors from concrete, which is Contec, masonry, Lidl &amp; Hart, who's a local Livonia firm, steel, and on and on, all the way down to electrical. Then you'll see the total, which matches the summary page. There were a few bidders that asked to have their bids withdrawn or rescinded because they made a mistake. Typically, if a firm makes an honest mistake during the bidding process, we don't hold that against them. We let them withdraw their bid, and that was the case, I believe, for three vendors this time around. And there are letters included or attached that explain why each one of those cases happened. So in some cases, we went to the second or third-low bidder. And then Section 4 just kind of breaks out the CM labor costs, some of the reimbursable costs, and then the CM fee as well, and then computes the contingency piece. So really, 3 and 4 are just detail. And then Section 5 is the bid tabulation, which gives you all, a list of all the bidders and what their bids were for each section of work, for each bid division of work. So I don't know if there's any questions or not. I know we went through this all last Wednesday, so.
Seeing none, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For your detailed report.
And don't go away.
You're right back up.
All right, you're going to let me stay? All right.
We have a motion.
I can't make the same joke again?
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, for the approval of construction bid results for Emerson Middle School and Riley Upper Elementary School 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6G, approval of bid results for teacher and lab computers, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Yes, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to purchase teacher and lab computers from Inacom TSG for a total of $3,283,715, and to provide a contingency budget of $328,371, for a total cost of $3,612,86.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Terrio?
So again, we went through this last week. This is laid out the same way. You've got Section B 1, which is a recommendation letter, just kind of outlining when the bids went out, which was December 22nd, and then when they were received, again, January 15th. We had seven proposals for the computer replacements. Section 2 gives just kind of an overall budget summary. So you can see the budget for this project was $3.5 million. The bids came in at about 3.3, so we had a positive variance there, which is good. And then we're carrying, we're recommending carrying 10% contingency as well. So the overall project cost is $3,612,86, which puts us about $237,000 under budget, which is where we like to be, so. B 3 just kind of gives you a little bit more detail. It's a recommendation letter from Barton Mallow. You can see we're purchasing about 3,400 computers. Those computers are also, we're also getting a two-year extended warranty on those, so they'll have a five-year warranty period, which is, which is great. All the specifications are on here, which I'm sure nobody wants me to get into, so I'll just keep going. Then also, in Section 4, we've got the bid tabulation. You can see that the bids were extremely tight. We had two or three bids that were right on top of each other, within $17,000, which is a very small variance on a pretty big project. So rest assured that those numbers were very competitive. And you can see that Inacom is the firm that's being recommended, so.
Thank you. Questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of bid results for teachers, teacher and lab computers, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6H, approval of contract extension for environmental consulting, 2013 bond. You're busy tonight.
I am.
Let me get a motion on the floor first, please.
Vice President Laura?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to extend the contract and approve the attached change orders for environmental consultants for Phase 2 bond construction, to Nova Environmental, at the cost of $100,000 for Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt Elementary Schools, and to ETC Environmental Consulting, at the cost of $50,000 for Riley Upper Elementary and Emerson Middle School, for a total cost of $150,000.
Support.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Terrio?
So again, Section C 1, just to give a quick overview, the environmental consulting firms that we hired last year were engaged through a public bid process, even though that's not a requirement of the state, but we thought we should do that. So we ended up having, I believe, seven or eight firms that had proposed. We engaged two of those firms, and then kind of split the work up amongst the two of them, so we had some redundancy. Nova Environmental is doing all the lower elementary schools, and then ETC is doing the middle, upper elementary, middle, and high school buildings. upper elementary, middle, and high school buildings. So really, what we wanted to do is make sure that they got through the first summer, and that we were happy with their services. And then we are planning on re-engaging them every year going forward. So this proposal in front of you tonight is only for 2015. At the end of 2015, we'll reevaluate them again, and then award them 2016 if we're happy with their, with their work. These are really professional service contracts that we're recommending writing a change order against. The way that their contracts are set up is it's really a time and material or hourly basis. If the abatement contractors that are doing the work have to work an extra day or two to complete, then obviously, they have to stay and monitor those activities and make sure that all the tests are passed, and we have clearances and things like that. So these budget numbers are really more of a budget than a hard fixed cost. And we've tried to include a little bit of contingency in those, based on how the projects went last year. So at the more simple jobs, we're recommending about a $25,000 budget. Kennedy is a $50,000 budget that has some additional spray-on insulation that needs to be abated that's pretty tricky to get at, and really draws the schedule out a little bit longer. So all told, we're recommending $150,000 for these five projects. You'll see that Franklin is not included. We had hoped to have that as well, but that survey just came back last week, so we didn't quite have time to put a budget together. I actually just got that today. So I'll be reviewing that over the next couple of weeks. We'll probably bring that with the Franklin awards in March. So really, we're looking at $100,000 change order to Nova Environmental, and then $50,000 to ETC. So this is one of those instances where a change order is actually a good thing, because it's the way we set up the contract, to give us a little bit more control over our vendors, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald, for the approval of contract extension for Environmental Consulting, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6I, we, for the approval of contact, tract extension for security systems, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Yes, Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to extend the contract and approve the change order for security systems from security design for Phase II 2013 bond projects at Hayes, Kennedy, Roosevelt, Riley Upper Elementary Schools, Emerson Middle School, and Franklin High School, at a total cost of $101,118, including a contingency of $16,853.
Support.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mr. Terrio.
So that takes us to D1 in your binder. You'll see, again, the same format. There's a recommendation letter for security bids. If you'll recall, again, last year, we bid out, publicly bid out, security bids, which included really just the basic security system. I believe we had four or five responses to that. We interviewed, I think, three firms, and ended up recommending security design. They did a great job for us this year. In fact, we had a few little things that did not go quite as planned, and they were able to jump in and make sure we had things running for the first day of school. So I was very happy with the work that they did. They are also a local vendor that's just right down the street here in Livonia, which is an added bonus when something goes wrong and you need them at 6 o'clock on a Friday. So we really went back with them and reviewed all the unit pricing that we had had them hold for us from last year, looked at the scope of work. We've obviously met with principals, and this integrates into the construction as well. We've got door hardware that's included in the construction bids that then is controlled by the security system, access control points, things of that nature, door contacts to make sure that the doors are locked at night. So this is really the access control system and the security system for these six buildings. This does include Franklin High School, which is obviously a lot bigger than the other buildings, and therefore, the access control system and the security system are a little bit more costly at that building, just because of the size. But you'll see, we had a budget basically of $100,000, and we came in at about $84,000, which is great, so another positive variance. And then we're carrying about 20% contingency. So overall, $120,000 budget, and we're coming in at about $101,000. So about 20% under budget. D3 is just kind of the letter that kind of lays out security design scope. And then Section 4 is the change order, along with detailed line item scope as far as all the different devices they're installing, labor hours they're working, and things of that nature, so.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald, for the approval of contract extension for security systems, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. One more, correct?
One more.
Item 6J, approval of contract extension for the commissioning services, 2013 bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education approve the attached recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to extend the contract and approve the change order for Selinger Associates for Phase II commissioning services at Hayes, Kennedy, Roosevelt, Riley Upper Elementary Schools, Emerson Middle School, and Franklin High School for a total cost of $126,600, including contingency costs of $21,000.
Support.
Mrs. Jarvis? We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis.
So that brings us to E1 in your binders. This is for commissioning bids. So if you'll recall, again, last year, we bid out, publicly bid out, commissioning services for the 2015 projects. I believe we had six or seven firms that responded to that. We interviewed, I believe, three of them. And Selinger Associates was the firm that was recommended for award. Again, another local Livonia firm, so we're happy with that. This year, we basically set their contract up the same way as the other ones, where we only awarded them 2015. We wanted to make sure that we were happy with their performance, try to learn some lessons from last year, and then adjust the scope of work a little bit this year, which I'm happy to say actually brought the cost down a little bit, because we had some overlap in scope and some redundancies there. So we were able to bring those costs down even a little bit further. And last year, I thought we had a great pricing point to begin with, so that's good news. This year, we're obviously doing six projects with the inclusion of Franklin. We spent some time making sure that the commissioning firm was very clear on what the scope was at Franklin, because it's moved around a little bit mechanically, speaking especially. And they went through and repriced the project for us. So their quote is for $105,500, plus we're recommending carrying 20% contingency for a total of $126,600. E2 just kind of lays that out, the original budget, plus the contingency budget, and then the total as well, so another positive variance that we're happy about. And then E3 is kind of a proposal letter from Selinger that kind of details the square footage and what the budgets were, as well as what some of the specific scope of works would be. And then E4 is really just the change order to their contract, so.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield.
And this kind of goes back up the agenda a little bit along with this one. I want to thank you very much for preparing us so well that we don't have a lot of questions tonight. And thank you for everything that you've done for us, all of our binders, and just laying everything out so well, so that we can understand it and really take it to heart. So appreciate all your time and effort that you've put into that.
You're welcome. And we will certainly be back in March with another batch of awards, and then again, at the end of March, with a third one. So there were so many this year with the addition of the Franklin project and all the other, you know, work that goes into that. We wanted to make sure that we gave the board enough time to digest everything. And I believe next time, you'll actually have, as long as we don't have any more snow days, you'll actually have two full weeks to review everything. So that should be even better, so.
Anyone else? We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of the contract extension for commissioning services, 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you so much for your assistance in helping us today with this large number of projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Item 6K, approval of bid results for the heart rate monitor PEP grant. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the low bid for heart rate monitors from Polar Electro Inc., Lake Success, New York, for a total cost of $74,728.
Support.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. And Mrs. Oquus?
Thank you. As you know, the school district is in year two of implementing the PEP grant at the secondary level. One important aspect of this grant is to increase the healthy living habits of our students. We are excited about the purchase of these heart rate monitors, which will be utilized to enhance the awareness and the importance of movement and elevating heart rate as part of a person's exercise routines. We received two bids, and we are recommending the purchase go to Polar Electro for a total cost of $74,728. These purchases are to be made and funded by the PEP grant. No funds from the general fund will be utilized, and we would recommend this purchase.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Vice President Laura. Ms. Oquus, could you give us an idea of how many monitors there will be?
Yes. We are purchasing approximately 90 to 100 monitors to be utilized at each high school, and 60 to 70 monitors to be utilized at each middle school. Therefore, approximately two to three classes per day can have them utilized at a time at both our middle schools and high schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? A motion on the floor by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of bid results for a heart rate monitor from the PEP grant. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you call the vote, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6L, approval of a limited schools of choice for the 2015-2016 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent to participate in limited schools of choice under Section 105(c) for the 2015-16 school year. Openings to include up to 20 students at kindergarten, up to 10 each grades one and two, up to five students at each grade three and four, for a total of 50 students.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Oquus, will you speak to this, please? Or Dr. Leopold?
Just a couple of open comments, and I'll turn it over to Andrea. The proposal that we have before you is similar to the proposal that we reviewed last year. This is a revenue enhancement item for our school district, as we're looking at our budget for next year. As you know, we had just completed forums with our community, and we had over 300 people that attended those forums and helped us prioritize some of our thinking as it related to our overall budget. And as you know, a strong feeling from those that participated were looking for revenue enhancement items to protect programs and classes and schools across the school district. And so this is one example of such a program. As you know, we did implement this program last year in a limited basis, and we found it to be very successful to date. The students have assimilated very well into our school district, and it's been pretty much a seamless transition with the program last year. A couple of things that we learned this year was that the majority of the applications actually come with the earlier grades, which is why you see a bit of a change in the, in the grades that we're recommending to the board. Second, I would highlight that we're utilizing 50. Some people said, well, maybe you could offer a few more open seats. And again, this is a limited schools of choice program, number one. And number two, we can't come back at some point in time if we wish, based on the number of applications that we received and said, you know, maybe we should accept another 10, or another 20, or another 30 students if we wish. What we can't do is start there and then decide that we don't want to accept as many, based on the number of students that we have within our own, as our own residents. And so that's a little bit of background of a thinking process going into this recommendation. And I'll allow Andrea Oquus to share a few of the details as relates to the program.
Thank you, Dr. Leopold. As we discussed last week, we're recommending that we open up on a very limited basis, a total of 50 seats, under 105(c), which allows students from Wayne County or the contiguous ISDs to apply. We're recommending 50 student openings, 20 at the kindergarten level, 10 at first grade, 10 at second grade, 5 at third, and 5 at fourth. Again, it is up to that many students. If we have more students at each of those grade levels, then we are required to hold a public lottery, a random draw. So right now, we have the application window. Should the board choose to approve that this evening, to begin on March 2nd through March 31st. Again, if we needed the lottery, that would be held the morning of Thursday, April 2nd. And then we would notify families after that time if their application was drawn to be accepted. And then they would go through the regular process of registration with Livonia Public Schools. Again, if you're going to move forward this evening, then all materials will be available on our school website this week, with the process very clearly defined for any interested parties and families. And we would also, as required by law, publish this information in The Observer and Eccentric. You are required to have public notification of this during that 30-day window. It is anticipated that this would generate approximately $400,000 for the general fund for the 2015-16 school year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Just as a note, and we actually had a parent speak earlier, please, no cuts in our district. And as we understand that not every parent in the district, or not every stakeholder in the district agrees with limited schools of choice, I think personally, I feel that I would prefer to do some revenue enhancement programs, as opposed to having to cut programs. And as we noted in our public forums, we are at a critical point now where cutting programs is getting closer and closer to becoming a possible option. So although, as I said, that this is not necessarily a palatable choice to everyone in our community, I think the alternatives are even less so. And I would ask that the community help us to embrace this program and, and move us forward in our district and keep our programs.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. Vice President Laura, I too would like the community to know that I will be supporting this vote this evening. The community members who did come to our forums did express that they chose to have programs protected, and not many objected at all to the limited schools of choice program. I actually received an email from a parent who knew my position last year, because I was not in favor last year, asking me to consider this. And with much thought, I took that into consideration in my thought, because saving our students' programs are sometimes much more important than personal feelings or thoughts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? A motion on the floor by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers, for the approval of limited schools of choice program for the 2015-16 school year. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you call the vote, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Last item under our business matters is item Last item under our business matters is item 6m, approval to hire real estate services for possible land sales. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura.
Yes, Mr. Centers.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the hiring of professional real estate services from Great Northern Consulting Group in Arbor, Michigan, to market the Washington and Nakin Mills sites after topographic surveys are completed for an estimated cost of $30,000.
Support. A motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Abby, is that you?
Dr. Leopold.
Dr. Leopold.
Yes, just to provide some background information as it relates to the conversation around this, we've actually been talking about options and opportunities related to our vacant properties for quite some time now. The issues come up on different occasions, and we've talked about what those options and opportunities are. Certainly, as it relates to the real estate market, it's been a pretty dead time as it relates to vacant property for quite a few years. We do see that trend turning around, and so, we're back looking at some of our vacant properties and what would be the best alternative for them. As we've discussed this at the board table and amongst ourselves, we brought forward prior to the new year, a recommendation to the board that we actually look at five of our vacant parcels of property, and that we hire a real estate consultant to do that. And so, that did occur in December, and we received an update and a report in regards to possible uses for those different properties, and what we potentially could do. As you also know, in the meantime, we did have these community forums as it related to our budget. And as you know, revenue enhancement ideas such as selling property was something that was seen as something that was more palatable than the other options. And as we looked at that feedback, people did recognize that it is a one-time revenue, but it still was a better option than some of the other ideas that were expressed. And so, we came back to the board and talked about this last week, and that led us to looking at a phased-in process where potentially, we could look at a couple of parcels per year over the next several years. And in doing so, talked about utilizing the Great Lake, or the Great Northern Consulting Group, which has done work for a variety of school districts in the metropolitan Detroit area. Also, our board policy is clear that we can't hire a normal real estate agent who would work on a commission basis, but we can hire a consultant that would operate, much like Plant, Marine, and Cressa did tonight on our bond issue, where they oversee the review from an independent basis for the school district, and their fees aren't tied to any potential sale, but only looking out for what's in the best interest of the school district. And so, the recommendation tonight, then, is to move forward with this for the two properties mentioned, and see what the market may bring. So, if, the next step would be after, if the board approves the recommendation tonight, would to let them do their work, market the property, and then come back at a later date with a potential recommendation for sale. So, those are the options that we've talked about and the recommendation that we have before you tonight. Lisa, is there anything that you think we're missing?
No, I think you covered it. I just mentioned, of course, that if we do bring back a recommendation, the board's under no obligation to take any action at that time. They can evaluate it and make a decision at that time.
Thank you. Mrs. Jarvis?
I would like to have the community aware that even if a proposal does come in regarding the purchase of these properties, that the board has the prerogative of turning that down based on the intended usage that the bidder has in mind.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Vice President Laura. Well, I guess, before the meeting, I was all set to vote yes on this, and I'm not quite sure where I'm at on it at this point. I somewhat feel, just from hearing from audience communications this evening, that maybe we're putting the horse before the cart, or the cart before the horse. And maybe we need to have some public hearings and get some feedback, because one of the items that was brought to the board in reference to potentially selling any of our properties was that it was noted by Bill, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his last name, that to make sure that we get stakeholders, which are the neighbors', points of view before we did anything. And I think before we spend $30,000, maybe we need to have a public hearing or some other venues, or some community meetings for those folks that are going to be affected by these two sales. I think it would be a good gesture on the board's part to do something of this nature, and to make sure that everyone is aware, and that we're not just, you know, saying, you know, the Lord knows, we need the money. I know that. But I think we also need to be considerate of the people that live in the area. So, just my thought.
Mr. Centers?
Just one question for Dr. Leopold, regarding kind of what Eileen was saying there. These, my question is, having these surveys take place would allow for us to have a better idea about what can be done with the property, what kind of developments may or may not be there. So, my thought is, we would have a better, we would have a better idea of what we would think of doing with the property after we had consulted with, had these surveys done. Is that accurate, or?
Yes, that is accurate. Otherwise, we're going to be speculating. And so, I think the recommendation from the consultant that we had is certainly, we would reach out to the community, but it would be after we have a better idea of what potentially the use will be.
One other follow-up question, if you're, these surveys are something that will, would stay with the property for an extended period of time. Am I correct? That, you know, this, it doesn't, if we were to come back to this at a further, a later date, this is still something that would be very useful for us to have on record?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. My apologies, Mrs. Bonnefield, I will. So, just to follow up, we could do, Dr. Leopold, we could still do the topical surveys without marketing the properties, correct?
Yes, but without marketing the properties, we won't have an idea of what kind of interest is out there as it relates to what type of developments would be useful for those particular properties. I don't think we'd have a very complete picture without doing that work.
Okay. Mrs. Bonnefield, thank you for being patient.
No problem. I think, I'm going to put this in Robert's Rules kind of context, is that you can't discuss anything unless you have a motion on the floor. I don't think, if we do not move forward with this motion, that what happens is we're going to go out to public forums and provide information without knowing where we're going, and without being able to market this property, know what the proposals are, know even if there's any interest in the property, then I think going to the public, what is their feedback going to be? How are they going to provide feedback to us if we go, hey, look, you know, maybe we're thinking about selling the property. What is the feedback on that? If we can go to them and say, you know, we have some interest in residential home building, we have some interest in a commercial site coming in, you know, how do you feel about that? What is your opinion? We have a residential home builder coming in, and they're going, talking about X many number of sites with X many number acres of open area. How do you feel about that? I think we need to give the public something to respond to. I think, again, we don't have to sell the property if we go out to market it. I believe, and correct me if we're wrong, we have a large amount of say in what happens to the property that we agree on. We don't just sell it and it randomly gets subdivided. We have a lot of say in the types of home. We can, we can talk about, require what types of homes, open areas, and different, the builders will have to meet some obligations that we provide for them. They don't get to just willy-nilly develop the property if we do not agree with that. So, I think we need to move forward on this proposal so that we have information to go to the community with, we have solid foundation for the forums, and we understand where we're going. And again, at that point, we listen to the community, we can go to them, and we have concrete information for them to respond to.
Thank you. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, Vice President Laura. Hiring a real estate professional to help us with marketing is not the same as hiring a professional to help us with selling. By marketing, we're looking for information, bringing in information from the community, from potential buyers, from the neighbors, from everyone who is a stakeholder, so that we can make an informed decision as to whether we want to sell the property or do some other kind of action with it. This is just a first step. It's not a last step.
You said that much more eloquently than I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Maybe I can put this into perspective. There's talk about community forums. Seems to me, we just had those community forums. Our forums that we had in last month were advertised significantly. We had over three hundred people attend those. And my recollection in the groups that I had was that we wanted to protect programs, and one of the things that seemed to be the overwhelming choice to save those programs was to sell property that we are not utilizing. So, that issue, to me, has already gone to a public forum. We're now at the next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, for the approval to hire real estate services for possible land sales. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moves us to personnel matters. Item 7A, approval of teachers. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2014-15 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support. Motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Demann?
Thank you. I'm bringing the name of five teachers for approval to you this evening. These teachers have been interviewed, along with many other applicants, for the vacancies which existed in our instructional program. We believe these teachers are the most qualified for the positions, and recommend that they be approved for employment. These positions are listed within the 14-15 budget.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonald, approval for teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Congratulations to these teachers. Welcome to the Livonia Public School District. Item 7B, recall of teacher. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura.
Mrs. McDonald.
Moved that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent and recall to the district employment as a teacher for the 2014-15 school year, the person listed on the attached document dated February 9th, 2015.
Support. Motion on the floor by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Demann?
Yes, you have the name of one teacher for recall. Following the board authorization of June 2nd, 2014, to begin the recall procedure, the process was initiated. The attached document contains the name of one person who has been recalled. This leaves eleven persons remaining on the layoff from the June 2nd, 2014 layoff list, three persons remaining on layoff from the June 3rd, 13 layoff list, one person remaining on layoff from the June 4th of 2012 layoff list, and three persons remain on the layoff list from June 7th of 2010. This position is within the 2014-15 budget guidelines.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Mrs. Demann, I noted, you paused there. Is it eleven?
It's actually nine.
It's actually nine?
It's actually nine.
And that's from the June 2nd, 2014?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a motion on the floor by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, recall of teacher. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Welcome back to this teacher. Item 7c, leaves of absence. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the requests for a leave of absence as listed below. Tracy Lemke, February 12th; Tracy Weekly, January 26th.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Demann?
Yes, you have the name of two teachers who have requested a leave of absence for the remainder of this school year.
Questions or comments? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Johnson, leaves of absence. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and good luck to these teachers on their leave. Motion 7d, resignation. This is just an informational item for the board. There is no discussion, and we do not need a vote. So, we will move on to item 7e, resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Did you notice you've been missed all evening?
And not president or Mrs.?
Do not jinx it.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. I'm trying.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Cheryl Deskins, Cheryl Evans, Linda Gronkowski, Shirley Jaros, Jeffrey Kwasniak, and James McMeldrick.
Support.
Motion on the floor by Mr. C, I'm going, Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Demann?
Yes, you have before you resolutions of six LPS employees. These employees have dedicated a combined total of 143.4 years to the students, staff, and community of Livonia Public Schools. We wish to thank them for their dedicated service and wish them well as they embark on their new adventures, and I always love to do this one.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers, resolution of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, and as the board quired together, congratulations. Thank you for all your time and effort in servicing our school district. And let me be the first to tell you, there is life after retirement, and it's good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, item 7f. Okay, item 7F. We have a motion to, or we have the item to ratify a letter of understanding and approval of severance incentive plans for Livonia Educational Administrators and Superintendent Cabinet. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Laura?
Yes, Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District ratify the attached letter of understanding between the school district and Livonia Education Educational Administrators, LEEDs, and approve the attached severance incentive plans for LEEDs and the superintendent's cabinet.
Support.
A motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald, and Dr. Leepa.
Yes, just to provide some background information, as one of our cost-saving plans that we have put together, we're looking at an incentive to have those at the higher end of the pay scale move on. And as you know, when they're replaced by individuals at the lower end of the pay scale, there's a savings there, reduces our overall average salary costs. And again, in our efforts to preserve programs as we move forward, this is a cost-saving measure that we believe is appropriate to consider. You recall that we looked at this late last year, after getting bad news from the state as it relates to our overall funding for this current year. At that point in time, it was rather late when we offered it. We did not get enough individuals to sign up to meet the requirements that we outlined in the incentive. And so at that point in time, it did not go. This time, we're bringing it forward much earlier, so staff do have time to consider this and think about if it would be of value to them. And so again, this is a budget decision that we're bringing forward to the Board of Education tonight. We'll talk to both F and G at the same time, even though you will vote on them separately. And so with that, I'd like to just turn it over to Dana Winery, who will share some of the details with you.
Good evening.
And before we do that, Mr. Winery, President Burton has arrived. I'm going to pass gavel to her. And move over to her seat. Okay, Mr. Winery, thank you.
The severance incentive plan is recommended to be offered for three different employee groups. The LEA, they represent our teachers, that would be the Livonia Education Association. LEEDs, who is our Livonia Educational Administrators, and they represent our principals and assistant principals and basically building administration. And then lastly, superintendent's cabinet. The plan would be the same for each of those groups, essentially. And it is essentially the same plan as we offered last year. We would ask that they be an employee as of March 3. That's the day we would mail out the announcement to all the employees. They qualify to participate in the severance incentive plan in one of two ways. Either they would have 20 years of LPS service as of June 30, or they would have 10 years of LPS service as of June 30 and be eligible for full retirement honor before that date under the terms of the state retirement system. And lastly, they'd have to sign and submit a separation agreement and a release and discharge of claims by April 17. And that would be the last day for employees to express an interest in participating in the severance incentive plan. Severance amount would be a total of $30,000, and that would be made in three separate installments to each participating employee. So each, the last pay of August of 2015, 16, and 17, the employees who participate and sign on for this would receive a $10,000 payment. The district reserves the right to cancel or withdraw the severance incentive plan honor before May 1 of this year if less than 40 employees, and that would be combined employees between the LEA, LEEDs, and cabinet. If fewer than 40, retire under the provisions of the severance incentive plan. And the plan's consistent on the association's approval. Both the LEEDs and LEA have approved the plan and are supportive of us offering it to their employees. The timeframe would be that we'd offer it on March 3. April 17, we'd expect employees to have their expression of interest signed and turned in. And then the effective date of the separations would actually be June 30, 2015. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Comments, questions? Already. Thank you. Dr. Leepa, do you want to add anything to that?
Nope, enough. We've got the motion on the table and we just need a vote.
There's been a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 7G, ratification of the LEA letter of understanding and approval of severance incentive package. Dr. Leepa, did you want to add anything to that?
Nope. The explanation really covered both F and G, so we're just prepared, we are prepared for the board to take a vote.
Already. May I have a motion?
Madam President?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the letter of understanding between the school district and the Livonia Education Association, LEA, regarding the provisions for a severance incentive plan.
Support.
There's a motion on the table by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Are there any further comments, Mr. Winery? Or?
No.
Okay, already, just wanted to make sure. Any comments or questions by board members? Mrs. Bonnefield, rather, will take the role.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item 8, reports from the superintendent.
Thank you very much, President Burton. A couple of announcements. First of all, this Wednesday, February 11, is our annual Founder's Day. This is our opportunity where we celebrate and recognize the contributions of the local PTSAs in our community. It's always one of the best days of the year, and we're very excited about the event that will be at 6:00 PM, I believe, at School Craft College. And if anybody is interested in coming, they can go to the PTSA website and find more information. So looking forward to our annual Founder's Day this Wednesday. Also want to highlight that next Thursday, the Chamber of Commerce will hold their annual community awards event. This is an event that they do every year where they recognize businesses in the community, Citizens of the Year, and they also recognize our Teachers of the Year. Another great event and something that really makes us proud of our community. And so if anybody is interested in attending that event, please go to the Livonia Chamber of Commerce website, and they will have the details that is next, a week from this Thursday. And last, I just would highlight again, we had a great turnout at our community forums to get feedback from areas to our budget. And just want to take the opportunity to thank the hundreds of people in our community that took advantage of that opportunity, and we received excellent, excellent feedback. And I think it will help us as we move forward with some very, very difficult decisions. So thanks so much to those people that came out and participated in our community forums. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item 9, hearing from board members. 9A, we have the second reading and adoption of board policy. Can we get a motion on the table so we can discuss this?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt board policy language for the attached document for the following. Board policy, IHF, graduation requirements.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Laura. And Dr. Leepa?
Yes, this particular second reading is an adjustment to the policy to make sure that our graduation requirements are not only in agreement with new state requirements, but take into consideration new flexibility provided through the state of Michigan relating to high school graduation requirements. We've looked at this on several occasions, so I'll ask Mr. Archibald just to hit a couple of the highlights. And again, we've discussed this both in subcommittee, committee. We've discussed it at our first reading, and we're prepared to take a second reading on this to make it board policy. So Steve, if you want to just hit a couple of highlights in the new graduation requirements that's being recommended to the board.
Certainly, the change in language arts is simply a clarification to reflect current practice. There is no actual change there with respect to courses that students will take. Change in science is that students will be required to take a unit of biology and a unit of chemistry, which is as it is currently, but they will have a choice. They may either take a unit of physics or physical science or complete CTE program. And in world language, the requirement is for two units of the same world language. We've added two additional options that students can take advantage of in order to meet that requirement. The option as it is currently, the students can take two units of the same world language. What is new is the student may take one unit of the same world language and one unit of career technical education. And an additional option is that students may take one unit of the same world language and one unit of visual performing and applied arts, in addition to what is currently required. So those are the proposed changes.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? Mr. Johnson?
President Burton, just to clarify, Steve, this starts for the 2016 graduating class, correct?
2016 and beyond.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No? I would just like to commend our lawmakers for recognizing the difficult position that our high schoolers were in with, especially those that had long-term commitments such as marching band, et cetera, and were really looking for some flexibility to get some electives into their schedules. So I'd like to commend our lawmakers for making this adjustment in the high school graduation requirements and commend our administration and our board for promptly making that policy in Livonia Public Schools also. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 9B, first reading of board policy. Dr. Leepa, would you like to address?
Yes, as of course the board is well aware of, you've spent a lot of time over the last couple of years reviewing all of your board policies. You've put in a significant effort and you've made a revision to a variety of policies to get them up to date. What you do have before you tonight are a variety of policies that really just had very minor either grammatical or numerical changes to be made and had no change in regards to the intent of the policy. And so you're bringing forward all of these cleanup items after a lot of work done on all the other policies to make sure that they're just cleaned up and taken care of in that regard.
And this is the first reading, so we do not need a vote at this time. We will put this on our agenda for our next voting meeting, at which time we'll vote on these policies. Next item on our agenda is item 9C, approval of resolution in support of Michigan citizens for better roads in schools proposal.
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution to support the May 5 ballot proposal.
Support.
I need to make a correction. I'm sorry, I read off of an agenda that was not our most updated agenda. Let me sit here. This is, I'm sorry, can we read the amended title of this proposal?
Approval of resolution in support of the statewide May 5 ballot proposal.
Do we have support for the?
Support.
Correct. Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Bonnefield and support by Mr. Johnson. Sorry about that to the public, we had a minor correction there, but I wanted to make sure that it was read properly. Dr. Leepa, would you like to address this?
Yes, we discussed last week the May 5 roads ballot proposal that is before the voters in the state of Michigan statewide. That's coming up on May 5. And while it is a proposal to provide funding to repair the roads, it does have an impact on local schools across the state of Michigan also. And so it's an important issue for schools, and we've received many questions as it relates to, well, what does this ballot proposal mean? How does it impact our local school district? And how do you feel about it? And so the Board of Education discussed a resolution that would make it clear to the community how it felt about the resolution that was, or how it felt about the ballot proposal that was being afforded on May 5. Just in brief summary, the proposal takes a portion of sales tax that's collected on motor vehicle fuels and sets it aside to repair the roads. It also takes some additional money related to a fuel vehicle tax and sets it aside. And what happens by doing that is it leaves a hole in the school aid fund because a portion of those dollars currently go to fund the public schools. And so the other portion, of course, of the ballot proposal is that it increases the sales tax percentage from 6% to 7%, which not only replenishes the school aid fund, but will provide some additional dollars to local schools across the state. It also makes it clear in the Constitution that the state of Michigan, when their legislators, when they're doing their budget, cannot use the school aid fund to fund universities or colleges in the state of Michigan. And as you may recall, four years ago, that was a real sore point for school districts when they began to do that because it took away dollars from, again, local K-12 schools. And so that's the impact that this particular proposal has on local schools. And so while it is a roads proposal and is focused on repairing our roads across the state of Michigan, it also does impact our local schools. Again, we've been asked about what our opinion is, and what this resolution does is makes it very clear about the opinion of the Board of Education as it relates to the ballot proposal.
Thank you. Mrs. Bonnefield, for the benefit of the public who has not seen our entire resolution, can you read it for them, please?
A resolution in support of the statewide May 5 ballot proposal. Whereas Michigan public schools continue to face difficult economic and budget challenges, and whereas these challenges have resulted in circumstances that directly and negatively affect our children's education, learning, and ability to compete for the 21st century jobs, and whereas these challenges are the result of funding shortfalls that directly impact children, parents, teachers, school staff, administrators, and the local community at large, and whereas we recognize that the best way to support our local schools and help our children learn is to restore funds to our classrooms, and whereas the Michigan Legislature has placed before voters a May 5 ballot proposal that would strengthen funding for classrooms and generate dollars to fix Michigan's roads and bridges, and whereas the May 5 ballot proposal would restrict use of the school aid fund dollars for only K-12 schools and community colleges and generate $300 million in additional funds for K-12 public schools annually, amounting to an additional $200 per pupil, and whereas we expect that the legislature will allocate funds so all districts receive the additional $200 per pupil, and whereas the May 5 ballot proposal is a bipartisan road funding solution that can repair the roads and bridges and ensure that our children arrive safely at school while protecting school funds so our children can receive a quality education that can prepare them for college and a career, and whereas citizens in Michigan have consistently said that schools and said that schools and roads are its highest priorities for investment, and whereas one penny on the dollar is a recognized sacrifice by citizens, but is an investment that is worth safer roads and better schools for everyone in Michigan. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District supports the May 5th ballot proposal because we strongly believe in restoring funds to our classrooms so all children have an opportunity to learn and compete in the 21st century jobs and that safe, well-maintained roads benefit everyone in Michigan.
Support.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from other board members? Thank you for taking the time to read that for our benefit and everybody else's. Mrs. Bonnefield, can you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item 9E, recessed closed session, consider opinion from legal counsel regarding business matter. May I have?
No.
No.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that, guys. Next item on our agenda, just getting a little over anxious there. Next item on our agenda is hearing from board members. And tonight, Mr. Centers is going to take care of at least the bulk of those duties for us.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick because we do have a closed session after this. I'd like to first thank Vice President Laura for doing a great job back in the saddle this evening and running the meetings.
Long time.
She did a great job. We had a number of young ladies who were our featured artists tonight. As Mr. Johnson pointed out, the boys need to bring it a little more. But the ladies that were there tonight had some great work. It was an honor to recognize our principals in the district. We all know that principals are one of the most important relationships that kids will have in a school or maybe even in their lives at that point in time. Our principals do a great job. We hear positive comments about their relationships with students, families, the kids themselves all the time. In fact, I had two, a couple of my assistant principals who are now serving as principals in our district, Mr. Willenborg and Mr. Gibbons, so they certainly had an impact on me. We wanted to thank everyone for our public comments tonight. We certainly have passionate members of the community. We heard someone tonight with comments. We've heard, like we said, a few hundred people come out and share their thoughts on what we should do as far as revenue enhancements. So again, thank you very much. We heard about some very exciting technology upgrades, whether it was desktops, it was the infrastructure, it was the wireless. I've had the opportunity to teach with some upgrades, some upgraded technology and without. And having taught with some great technology, it really helps engage the students. It helps differentiate, help kids with special needs. There's so many avenues that can open up with great technology. It's, I'm glad our community has invested in it. Paul Terrio is, seems like he's always here and always, he is, yeah. Always doing a great job of walking us through all the steps of the bond. He did that again tonight. Thank you for that. He's always very thorough and very professional. A clean audit on the bonds. This is an enormous sum of money, like we know, and it just is a huge compliment to our staff and the people at Plankford and Cressa who just do dot every i, cross every t, and thank you so much for everything you do. It speaks to Livonia Public Schools. People can have public trust in our district and people know it's an organization of integrity. We approved schools of choice and we made the clear distinction that this is limited schools of choice, something our, from our community forums, people were open to in limited capacity. We piloted this program last year with a lot of success and we're excited to have more students coming in this year. Congratulations to the teachers who retired and our teachers, our teachers getting called back. We have a retirement incentive that we approved this evening. It's always difficult to lose great experience and great talent, but in a time where we are struggling with the budget, we were going to need people to step up and fill some big shoes. But we're hoping that this incentive works for the teachers and for the district. And lastly, the statewide ballot proposal. I want to thank Dr. Lee again for his leadership on this, giving the community some clarification on this ballot proposal in May. We, this is not a windfall for us, like he said before, but it will help us in a time where we really need it. So thank you very much for everyone who came out tonight for a great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Are there other board members who would like to share thoughts? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I'd like to commend the Livonia Public Schools middle school and high school music students who participated in the solo and ensemble over the last two Saturdays. Our music programs and the students therein continue to be a source of pride for our district. I'd also like to remind our community that this weekend is Valentine's Day and suggest that they take their sweetie to the Kappa performance of Neil Simon's The Good Doctor, which will start on Thursday and run through Saturday. I know I have my tickets and I hope you do, too.
Thank you. Are there other board members who would like to share? Yes, Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, President Burton. I just would like to commend our cheerleaders from all three high schools, Churchill's, Franklin, and Stevenson. They all participated in the Kensington Lake Athletic Association championship this past weekend, and it was amazing to see how hard these young ladies work out all year. It's not just cheerleading, it's gymnastics, it's acrobats, it's strength training. And just like board policy for the first reading today, which is JGCA from 1990, said a student who wishes to participate in interscholastic games or sports, including cheerleading, which we're taking out the including cheerleading because it's not just standing there and shouting. And these, all these young ladies for each team that would go out on the floor, they all stood in line and supported each team individually and cheered them on. It was great to see such good sportsmanship out of all three schools. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bonnefield.
I'm going to, as a Stevenson parent, I'm going to give a little plug for Stevenson. I'd like to, and I think it's a great example of our community. I was able to go to freshman orientation with my younger son and it just, I have to commend the community. The school was packed. All the parents were there. It was just fantastic to see everybody so engaged with their students. And I also want to commend the staff. It was just fantastic. And I'm sure all the other high schools are doing their freshman orientations and just the overwhelming extra effort that they've put in to make our kids feel welcome into the next grade level. And I would also like to, Stevenson did their one act a week or so ago. And anytime the Churchill performance or the Stevenson performances, anytime as a community member, if you can get a chance to go and see these kids at any of the schools do these dramas in the drama department, it's fantastic. And again, the kids do a fantastic job and they're really amazing. And there was some very, one particular very provocative is in thought-provoking one act that they did regarding one of the students in, I don't know how to say it. It was really thought-provoking. It was from the aspect of it's a school shooting and the kids that had been, that were deceased and it was, to see the students do that and the level that it took for them to do that and just, I think it just, it was just fantastic. And I just can't say enough about it. And I kind of wish they'd take it on as a road show because it was just that one particular, just fabulous. And the kids did a great job. So I just can't say enough about it. They just, it was, it was great.
Sounds good. Thank you. Comments for others? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Mrs. Jarvis sort of stole my thunder. I had some numbers in my head with regard to the solo ensemble. And Heather Wickman does a great job over at Stevenson. I mean, she instilled in my daughter a passion for music and she is doing her student teaching right now and will be graduating in May with a music education degree. But I, my recollection, as I may butcher the numbers, that she had 40 students, 40 acts that went and had 32 or 33 number ones. Which are superb. And as a footnote to that, I happened to be listening to the radio today and there was a singer-songwriter by the name of Barry Manilow, oh, Barry Manilow, I'm sorry, who actually was talking about how music education makes a better student. And it was, it was sort of amazing to listen to him at the level that he's at talk about student education and how students that take music tend to be better readers, they tend to be better students, and they tend to get better grades. I thought it was very topical. So I just thought I'd bring that up. Thanks.
Would any other board member like to add any comments? Okay. I would like to just echo my colleagues' comments. I was at a Franklin performance recently, too, and halfway through, we thought to myself, you don't have to go down to the Fox or the Fisher. You really can get quality performances out of our high schools. And it's a thrill to see our kids up there. It's also a thrill to know that our community so supports not only the arts, but the rest of our student body and their activities, that we can bring truly quality facilities to our kids, which they really have been deserving for a very long time. It's going to be a thrill over the next few years to see what we can really, what our kids can really do when they have proper facilities and equipment to work with. And for that, we thank our community. I would also like to give my thanks to Mrs. Laura for taking over for me tonight while I attended to a previous family obligation and for my board to be understanding of that. I thank you very much. Now we'll go to the next item on the agenda. Item 9E, recessed to closed session to consider an opinion for a legal counsel regarding a business matter. May we have a motion?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District recessed to closed session for the purpose of consideration of opinion from legal counsel regarding a business matter.
Support. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are at recess. Thank you.